This meeting is called to order.
Let's have prayer, please. Lord, we've come to you tonight just thanking you for your many, many blessings that you pour on us, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to get together and to work on issues and things that affect all of us in our city and parish. Lord, we just thank you for loving us, especially in these times that we're in tonight. And, Lord, we just pray that you give us a good night tonight, and we give you honor and praise in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Good. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of what liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and the board of Alderman, and where's Valentine coming up, Black History Month, and anything else that we have going on. We're gonna try to get through this agenda as quickly as possible because of the chamber banquet, even though it looks lengthy, but I think we can get through it pretty quickly. Ms. Goldman, roll call to determiner quorum.
Ms. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mayor, all present, but Mr. Green.
All right, thank you. On the pledge, announcements, I'm gonna do this on the front end. Let us, just where we are, bow our heads to a moment of silence for Jerry Kane, Jerry Jordan, Anthony Robinson, and Dennis Ware. Thank you. Announcement, I have a few announcements. I was gonna go through a whole list of things, but I may just put them off since we're trying to get through the agenda to accommodate the chambers banquet. Alyssa Dismut was supposed to be with us tonight to get her award from the city, but she is in such high demand, she had several engagements, she had to be somewhere else. But we will give it to her at some point in time. You have in your folder broadband update, that's just for your reading at your own leisure of time. Public Works did an assessment of the lights that were out in the communities, and they came up with like 250 lights, and we continued to pay the bill. So we're working with Entergy to see what we can get done. They committed to doing the main quarters first, but they should do the entire, all of them, because we are paying that bill. Reapportionment, it's that time of year, we're in the census, well, 2020 marked the census year. So we have already engaged Delta Regional Authority to work with us on reapportionment. Delta Regional Authority, North Delta Regional Authority, that's what it is. Don't throw me off like that, Mr. Prater. North Delta Regional Authority, it's both, we're both correct.
That sounds good.
Okay, I'll let you win that one.
I'm good.
North Delta Regional Authority. Anyway, Ms. Goldman, what's the update on that contract?
It's on the agenda for them to give you permission to sign that, and then, once you do that, we'll contact them. We're on a list, they're very busy, but we'll be on the list, they're doing almost everybody's in northeast Louisiana. Y'all can see that in the paperwork I give y'all. But they've done it for us in the years past, Mr. Lot will remember that, and they do a really good job, and their process is really reasonable.
Think we were like three weeks out, wasn't it, Ms. Goldman?
I think so, yes, ma'am.
On the waiting list, okay.
Will they meet with us individually or what?
They will, just like they did before, the same gentleman's doing it, that did the actual mapping and all. He'll meet with y'all together and then individually.
And the public will have an opportunity to view those maps as well. Okay, I had a conference call with the National League of Cities, and they are working with me on our revitalization plan. Along with Ms. King is going to be providing some information to go with our plan. Also, I want to ask, keep Moore's beautiful. Who's he, okay, Ms. Evans. We're gonna need some information, since you all are an auxiliary group. The National League of Cities is helping with the demographics. We're looking at poverty and where the greatest need exists, which I think from visuals, we can all pretty much see that. Good news, we were awarded the micro grant, which is a small grant, but it's a stepping stone. And this grant is to measure outcomes for young children, and we have a consultant that we wrote into the grant to do that. You probably often hear me refer to, if we're going to change the environment, to change the culture, we have to start with the young people. And this was a grant that was made available through the National League of Cities. So M5, is M5 here? He may be out of town. And that's through working with the M5 organization. Delta Community College, we now have, instead of a memorandum of understanding, we have a cooperative endeavor agreement, which are pretty much the same, aren't they? Mr. Pierre is just a matter of semantics, and some people may prefer one thing, but the Community College preferred cooperative endeavor agreement. We will be signing that contract, and I have some good news on the horizon, but I will wait jointly with them to make that update. But I spoke with Dr. Esters today, yesterday, so we've been in communication. That's going to be a very big ordeal for our community. The ongoing projects that we have, we got the walking trail going, the block grant with the sewer survey, the American Rescue, the CARES Act with the airport, the City Hall with capital outlay in the roof. We have a security project on making this safe, building safer. We have a grant with the Sheriff's Department that we're working on, and we still have the Parks Grant, which we're keeping our fingers crossed that all of that would turn out well.
We know anything about McPhee Bridge?
Actually, you have in your package, Ms. Goldman, if you would, or did you pass them out?
I'll pass it out, ma'am.
And we list this on the website. All of the roads that are closed. Our Public Works Director had to leave on an emergency. But visit our website, we have the City of Bastrop officials, and we have our other page going as well. We keep that updated.
You're slipping on your jaw.
Also, and as council members, you've probably received something from the Lieutenant Governor, don't love the boot. And this has to do with keeping Louisiana beautiful. And Mr. Green had called me, he and Mrs. Tapping are co-chairs of the cleanup beautification, so Mr. Green is unable to be with us tonight. Ms. Tapping, did you wanna talk about what kind of exchange you and Mr. Green had?
I can. Governor John Bell Edwards has created an initiative for individual families and self-appointed small groups across Louisiana to join, and it's a program called Love the Boot. You can make a difference by taking the monthly challenge, organize a cleanup, or a beautification project in your area. He has declared April 18th through the 24th as Love the Boot Week. Also, part of this initiative is declaring the fourth Saturday of each month in 2022 as an official cleanup day. We plan to work along with the beautification committee in order to ensure this program's success.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Tapping. I did get staff to register the City of Bastrop, and they had free tool kits if you were among the first 100. So we'll find out if we get a tool kit, whether we met that threshold or not. And also, we will do PR blitz, and we scheduled it because we had to online put in a date. We scheduled it for the 18th, but I always try to respect and be mindful that everybody has a different schedule up here. So, but tentatively, the kickoff, we set it for the 18th. Okay, any other announcements, district announcements, just anything you want to share?
Well, we're continuing to work on our sewer and also our streets overlay, doing really well. We've had beautiful weather to do that work, and we're in the process of surveying it. And to where it will soon be where we can go out for quotes on that work. And so, you know, we got that to look forward to. Good to see the railroad crossings made this head list, and they've been out there working, and you'd notice, probably sure you'd notice, that out by pretty much 165 right now, and maybe 425 coming. But begin by understanding that that is not, that's really something that the federal people have to help us with, for the federal highways, and then we take care of what's in the city. And so, we got some going strong with the engineering group on that, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw, anybody else?
We'll see if nothing about McPhee Bridge on here.
Okay, well, we'll get an update. The engineers are looking at it and who's gonna do the work. We really want it done properly, don't want a bridge collapsing under anybody. Item number four, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, regular meeting, January 13, 2022.
I make that motion.
Have a second. Have a second.
And second, in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Public comments as they relate to items on their agenda. Item number six, consideration of and action on reports of commit-
Is that what you're saying, item number five?
Excuse me, sir?
Item number five.
Number five, comments as they relate to items on the agenda, but your name is also on-
11A.
11A.
That is correct, but I do have the right to comment on anything on this agenda.
I was inquiring if it's the same subject.
No, it's not, it's recorded on item number 11L.
Okay.
If I can proceed right here, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think this council needs to reconsider this nomination for tonight, and table this until a full board is present, so everybody can be on one accord. I think this board should table number 11L, thank you.
Let the record reflect, that was Mr. Ricky Anderson. Item number six, okay, was it, didn't anybody else have anything else that they wanted to? Okay. All right, going down to reports on official online, okay, I'm getting crossed up here, okay. A, reports of city officials or employees required by law by action of the governing body. Okay, you have the road closures. Mr. Reed, you wanna give an update on that grant through the Sheriff's Department?
We had discussed in the Finance Committee meeting some of the road closures. Right now, the roads that are back open are White Avenue at Elm Street, through traffic, Airport and Blackwell. Now, the roads that are closed are gonna be NAF west of LA 593 at the railroad crossing. It's gonna be closed Wednesday, February the 9th, 9 to 12 p.m. Friday, February the 11th, 6 p.m., and the detour is gonna be LA 139 to US 165. It's gonna be closed to all vehicle traffic, it's gonna be US 165, West Jefferson at the railroad crossing. It's gonna be closed Friday, February the 11th, 6 p.m., Monday, February the 14th, 6 p.m. The detour is gonna be US 425 and LA 830-3 Cherry Ridge Road. And the final ones is gonna be US 165 East Madison Railroad Crossing, closed Friday, February 18th, 6 p.m. through Monday, February 21st, 6 p.m. The detour for that is gonna be LA 830-6, US 425, and LA 830-3, which is Cherry Ridge Road.
Thank you, do you wanna speak to that grant that we are working with the Sheriff's Department on?
Oh, in reference to the traffic lights or the highway?
The one we had to go in and do a little, speak to both of them, since you're there.
Okay, well, we had a grant that we were looking into with the Sheriff's Department about having some traffic monitoring lights put up through the state. We've been working on that for the last two years, I think Ms. Goldman might have a record of that project that we were working on. But I don't know where we're at on it, I hadn't heard back from anything on it.
I hadn't heard anything.
And as to the other one?
It's a JAG, but I'm sure it's to buy equipment, that's usually what it's for.
Right.
They do like vest or walkie-talkies, flashlights, that sort of thing, it's a small grant.
It's a very small grant. But we should be able to purchase a couple of tasers with it and some batteries for the taser. It has to be used for specific items, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Crowder, any updates?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Any updates you wanna provide at this time? Would you come to the mic, please?
As I spoke with the Finance Committee earlier, the only thing that we really have going right now is we initiated a burn ban through Ma's Parish Police Jury, starting today. They'll probably try to have it on the news this evening, from what I was told. We have been exhibiting in a lot of brush fires all throughout the parish, from one end to the other, from way up to cross the road, all the way back down, almost in start, I mean, swartz. So way out on West Lake and all of those areas. So we've been running really bad, had about five today. So we initiated that ban to try to have the citizens slow up on the burning a little bit, you know, so we can not burn up everybody else's property. But as far as that, we're working on the grant, we turned the paperwork in, we're in the copying stage, we turned the paperwork in to complete the re-study of the grant that we already had when we got the one. This is the re-study that they do to make sure that we stay at one. So it's looking very good. We're gonna turn that in Monday to the Louisiana, the insurance company, auditors or whatever, and hopefully, things will be as good as I feel they will.
Thank you, that's the property assessment group, property assessment group.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to Chief Crowder. 7A Finance Committee Report Resolution 22, 1988 Bills and Claims for the month of January 2022. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt this committee report for bills and claims for the month of January.
Properly moved?
Definitely.
And second, in the discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Item number eight, action on ordinance and resolution introduced at previous meeting. Ms. Goldman, we got anything?
No, ma'am, we don't have anything left over.
Other unfinished business. A, discussion, action, permission to advertise for bids for sale of land on Marouge Road, Grabout Road, Cut Off Road, Echoes Road. You're familiar with this, Mr. McGee is here with us, he is interested in acquiring this property. He has had several conversations, and he was out of town a few times. I have stated my position of why I feel that it would be a good move for the city, especially we have the firefighters lawsuit that's going, and we're gonna have to budget. We can't use dedicated funds to apply to reduce that deficit that we're gonna end up having as a result of that. Plus, this dump has been closed, probably will never be used again, it's wetland, as Mr. McGee indicated. It puts immediate cash into our coffers, as well as puts the property back on the tax roll. Mr. Pierre, did you wanna speak to that?
I mean, I can't, if we shall, this is the one, this is the project, it did come before the council before, and the property, as indicated by the mayor, is one that has not been on the tax roll, so it's just simply there. It's up to you all to decide whether or not you're gonna advertise for bids, it has been advertised for bids before, there was a bid that came in, but when it came before the council, the council decided, even though they said advertise for the bid, that they wouldn't accept the bid. So that's where you are on that.
Okay, at this time, is there any, anybody would like to ask?
Well, let me ask you, what about the residents that's all around there, and them citizens all the way around this area? Is that in harm's way, so to speak, when they fire up guns?
I think, Mr. McGee, if you'll come to the microphone, because you're out there, but as it stands, the city owns the property, is outside of the city limits, and we don't have anybody monitoring it. But that does not relieve us of a liability of what happens on it. So, Mr. McGee?
Yes, so I measured the distance between the very western boundary to the nearest house, and it was a quarter of a mile.
I thought you told me 400 yards, excuse me. When I asked last time, you told me 400 yards.
Yeah, 400 yards would be 1,200 feet, and a quarter mile is 1,240 feet. And elevation differences between where this property is, is 90, and the houses are at 140. I'm not a rifle hunter anyway, hunters in general don't shoot towards houses. I just, I fail to see the risk there.
I thought we'd voted on this already.
How many times can we vote?
No, we, no, sir, you did vote, back, when was that, Ms. Goldman?
I don't remember what month, but what you voted on was not to accept the bid that we had.
So, Mr. McGee was still interested in the property because there's some property that's contiguous to this dump. And you wanna talk to that, Mr. McGee?
Yes, it's contiguous, it's downhill, it's a wetland, and it's landlocked. I just don't see another use of it for the city, I just don't wanna deprive the city of this money for, you know, three residents that are a quarter mile away that aren't residents of the City of Bastrop.
Okay, are there any statements of why you may feel resistance to selling this property or inclined to sell it? Okay. To answer your question again, Mr. Prater, he came with an initial proposal, and we went through the, having the property appraised, he paid money, we paid money, he did the bid, we ran it in the newspaper. And he was hoping that that would be a change of mind, so he came, he requested to be on the agenda so that he could personally express what he expressed last month. So if you will recall, I said we would put it on this month's agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion on item number 9A. Permission to advertise for bid for sale of the property. There's no motion, no statement of why we want to hold this property?
Is it, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think I'm in favor of this project because of using that revenue for a really good cause to settle up. This is a good step for that, so, you know, unless there's some reason, I think I could offer a motion for that.
Properly moved? Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Item number 10, introduction of and permitted action for proposed ordinance and resolution. Item A, Resolution 22-1989, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of actions taken to maintain permit requirements for Louisiana water discharge permit system, LWDPS, LA 0020443, Main Treatment Plant, Ms. Goldman.
Sandra's here.
Do I need to go to the-
Right, yes.
Please do. State your name, and-
Sandra Harrison with Veolia, working in the Sewer Department. This is annual renewal that we have to do every year and signed by y'all, stating basically what the city or Veolia is gonna do for the treatment plants. As in y'all's letters, y'all have the resolution, it's for point repairs, cleaning of the lines, line replacements is needed. line replacements is needed, continue operation, maintenance, rehabilitation, pump stations, maintenance upkeep of the pre-treatment ponds. DG pre-treatment upkeep and rehabilitation of the main plant is needed. And all of these, there's everything that's carried on all year during the year. It's just a resolution that we had to submit to DEQ.
I approve of the approval of Resolution 22-1989.
A second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Resolution 22-1990, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of Actions Taken to Maintain Permit Requirements for Louisiana Water Discharge Permit System, number LA 0020109, West Pond Treatment Plant. While you there, Sandra?
Yeah, it's the same thing, except it's for the permit we have at the West Pond. Same thing, line cleaning, point repairs, any kind of maintenance that we need through the year. And this is just letting DEQ know what we, our plans are for the year.
Now, if we approve Resolution 22-1990?
Properly moved.
A second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item number C, under 10, Resolution 22-1991, a resolution authorizing the city of Bastrop through its mayor to sign a contract with North Delta Regional Planning and Development District in cooperation for the purpose to render certain technical services in conjunction with the redistricting plan of the city of Bastrop as required by the Voting Rights Act. Okay, we have already, we did this under announcements, so, does anybody need any clarity before we, if I ask for a motion? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make that motion.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item 11, other business. Ricky Anderson, Bastrop Police Department, Bastrop Civil Service Board.
Thank you.
This one is the green sense exhaust, ma'am.
I do have handout.
Please.
Yes.
And for the record, my name is Ricky Allen Anderson. I live in District E, if I'm correct. Mr. office, my representative. Good evening.
Good evening.
What you have before you, ladies and gentlemen, is information EE1, EE2, and EE3. EE1 is a document copy of the Civil Service Board meeting, and this is the agenda that was held January the 20th, 2022. And it also has six items on the agenda. And on number six, at the very last bottom, where you see the red X, that's what we relate to EE2 as well. That is EE2, subject is suspension, pension investigation, or judicial administration review. This is a general order 105, and it's come from the category which would be the administration. This takes effect December the 18th, 2021. EE3 is another documentation that will also coincide with EE1, item number six, at the red X at the dotted line. EE3 is the Louisiana State Police Investigation Case Number 21093375. This is the subject in a criminal matter, an investigation, the subject Keyshawn Lynch, Louisiana Vice Director, 14, 138, payroll fraud. Ladies and gentlemen, when you read this information, pay close attention to it, because it shows good variance on documented EE1, item number six, number at the very bottom by the red X, and it contains Keyshawn Lynch. That's the reason why we should table item number 11, and appoint him to the chief of police. Thank you and good evening.
11B, Crystal Tate, Amy Jones, barrel race event with alcohol sale. Any representatives here? State your name, please.
Crystal Tate.
Go ahead.
Yes, I hold several events throughout the year at the MAC. The last weekend of March, and then again, the last weekend of October this year, we'll have another big race. We bring in about 1,500 to 1,600 contestants to the area for the weekend. And there's a company called The Roman Pony that she brings in. It's kind of like a mobile bar, and she wants to come be a vendor. And to do so, I got to doing some research that we would need to have your permission, and then for her to have a liquor license, which she's agreed to do. So, she called and said I needed to come to this meeting, obtained a letter from the MAC, from Mr. Jimmy Christmas, that's the president, saying that he agreed that that's fine, because she does pay a vendor fee. And we're just asking permission. She will, you know, follow the typical guidelines to sell to only those over 21. And we're actually, I asked that there be a limit that contestants and spectators can only buy a certain amount, because I don't want any shenanigans.
Okay. Assistant Chief Reed, are you back there? Would you like to come and talk about the request that's being placed before us? We have done in the past those temporary...
Yes, ma'am.
Granting a license to?
Right, I had spoke with her over the phone, and I told her we would look into everything that we would have to do to have it done for her, and if she meets the requirements, we'll be more than happy to allow her to do that.
Okay, you've reviewed everything?
I haven't reviewed everything, but I reviewed, what else do you have? It's basically the same stuff we talked about.
Yes, sir.
So, I've seen it.
Okay.
Same stuff we talked about.
All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to grant this request to sell liquor. Is it just beer, or is it...
It will be beer and liquor at our two events, the one at the end of March, and then the one at the end of October.
Okay. What is the pleasure of this council?
What's it gonna be? I don't know nothing about a barrel race. What's a barrel race?
It's like the rodeo, except for it's the women compete in the barrel racing.
Where they gonna have it at?
At the MAC, the Morehouse Activities Center.
Who's gonna check these people, make sure they're over 21?
She will, because this is what she does for a living. She will be getting a liquor license from the ATC, I believe that's the correct name.
Yeah, I'm kind of confused.
Yes, sir.
I thought the police jury was over the MAC.
They are.
They are, but Jimmy Christmas is the president over the MAC, and he talked to them, and I got the letter saying that they all agreed that it was fine, that we just wanted to make sure that we did everything legal the correct way.
Okay.
Was it going through the city? I'm just asking.
No, it didn't go through.
I got it.
But it's inside city.
Oh, okay. Just trying to figure out.
Yes, sir. Okay, well, I made that motion.
Okay, has a motion been made?
I made the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for the presentation.
One, thank you. One quick question is, I have to have a letter from the city saying that y'all agreed that it was okay. How would I obtain that?
Okay. We'll get Mr. Assistant Chief Reed to work with you on that, if you will give him your information, your contact information.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Item C, Charles, Bishop Charles Bradford, redistricting map, community police program, discussing police salary and raises.
Good evening, Bishop Charles Bradford, 1320 South Washington Street, here in Bastrop, Louisiana. Just listening to the meeting tonight, I'm gonna talk about redistricting first. I think you kind of covered some of my answers the other day, I'm gonna go through North Delta and go through the planning, but I would request that we have a community meet, at least two community meetings before we finalize our redistricting, our public to the public, the people that are affected by it, we'll know what's going on, you know, in our redistricting, you know, we do this every 10 years, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I think that we need to have a better input, especially to people in Bastrop, because we only a four-mile radius, you know, once you get outside Marouge or wherever there, you know, it don't even have anything to do with Bastrop, so local.
5.8.
Yeah, okay, 5.8, okay, well, like I say, I would ask that the city government have at least have two public meetings, and let them know, let the public know the dates and time that we're gonna discuss these maps, look at these maps before they be approved.
Yes, sir. You raise a very good point, and we do plan to publicize that, and we're gonna do it in proper and in order. We realize population has shifted, some districts may have lost, some districts may have gained. We have subdivisions that have been built since the last census. Matter of fact, the last census I was in office, so I've been through a situation like that in North Delta Regional Authority, they're very good at what they do. So, but thank you for making those points, Bishop Bradford.
I have one other point, too, on a state level there. I wonder could our city, you know, their redistricting, the Congress, the fifth, well, Congress district all over the state, they want, that's a possibility we can have a new Congress seat made of African-Americans. And I wonder could our city, because we are 95% African-American now, could our city government kind of give our state representative a letter of support in what they're trying to do down in Baton Rouge? I think they're discussing that, that's what's taking place right now, is taking place, that we could get our government saying, hey, we support another district, you know, and makes, someone that represents people inside this community. I mean, Mrs., what's her name, Letlow, do the wonderful job, not criticizing her work, but we need a better voice for the inner city, for this eight-point, you know, for we are South Monroe, places like that. We gotta have a voice in Washington. I think the local government should start taking more action and being a voice for the people in their community that they represent. And we never have, that's why we don't have representation in Washington like we should have for the African-American community. The 1965 Act, we all know that's coming up, everybody following that in Washington. I think we need to get more involved locally, and be more of a voice for our people in our community, and speak, you know, where we are. Like I said, I'm sure South Monroe and places like this, where a highly populated population area of African-Americans, we need a voice. And I think I've been a city here in Bastrop, we need to, our city government, our representatives need to send a letter to the, down to Baton Rouge, speaking on our behalf, because that's who you represent. Now, that's another thing, I think we could be more effective, especially when it comes to the 1965 Act, you know, what we're trying to do. I think everyone here got some idea what's going on with the John Lewis Act.
Okay.
We're trying to get, that's one other thing I want to talk about, for, I hope that our city consider that, okay? Our council, maybe I'll okay the medicine that they're on behalf of the city, or you have to vote on, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Pierre, he can lead you on that, but I'm sure just speaking for your people, you know, we gotta speak up, gotta speak up. And I move on here, it won't be long, you got a banquet, you're gonna make a community policing program. The federal government is coming out with a lot of community program there, begging the community to get involved. You know, we are all policemen. Our children and everybody, we think we should take a better pride in our community for its policing. I mean, just Bastrop has the same problem the whole nation have, you know, we're no different from anybody else. But I think you have to start somewhere. I think we need to start community policing, I think we need to write grants, money to really get our kids for my education, get them young, you know, start getting them involved, start programs, start where they can be community policing, make them visible. We got to be visible, we got to let the kids in that community, especially the African-American community where the high crime is there, that they're part of the community, they're somebody. And it starts with your local city government. We can get grant money, they begging all over the, get grant money, get kids, get them hats, caps, radio, get activities for them, I think athletic programs, chess games, anything, you know, academics at the school, unify, unify them up, let them know that that's their friend, not their enemy. That's their protection, not their enemy. You know, we, our kids in African-American community, it's scattered the police.
Okay.
They run. Okay, I'm sorry.
Enter your next point, please.
Okay, why do you know, Mayor, if you're gonna, not the mayor, but the council, excuse me, I'm not speaking at your personal, that we gotta get more involved, okay? That's all I'm saying. You ask for help, you ask for people who want to get involved, there's somebody there, and it takes the leadership to do it. I'm gonna go back and talk about our police for a moment, I'm gonna move on. They underpaid, they underpaid. Y'all should look into the local budget, and see can you increase the communal hiring when you bring them in. Let's get some officers in here, they understand, they understand. I have called, and they never responded. I've been waiting on one of the local officers, I called last Friday, I hadn't heard from him yet, left two messages with the dispatcher. We got shooting on every, just not the west side no more, it's on every side. Young folks are shooting, carrying more guns than the police. These people got to be paid more, so they can get a, you know, they can get up and feel about the job. We got to get people, we're understaffed, 50%, understaffed. And I think it's the city government responsibility, not the people, say, well, that's all they're gonna do. No, we need to come up with program and pay these officers a decent salary, and hire peoples in, and get our city up to par. Understaffed police department is for their concern, your city, you know, it's not functioning right.
Okay.
You know, it's not functioning right.
Will you bring your points to a close, please, Bishop Bradford?
Yeah, ma'am, I've been waiting to say this a long time, and I would appreciate you just let me have a couple more minutes, because I'm bothered about it. But when I call the police officer, and he don't come out, they're shooting in front of my house, right from your house, I'm bothered about that, you know? My taxpayer, I should be able to voice myself until I'm clear, and I don't want you just hear me enclose the door, I want expectancy action. We can't get police, enough police in, we need to declare this a state emergency. These young folks shooting these gun around here like Wi-Fi. Is I'm lying, chief?
Thank you, Bishop Bradford.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
Item D, appoint member to City of Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission, Ms. Angela Gladney. Is she here?
She may not be here.
Ms. Rogers, you want to speak to that?
Yes, Mayor, my name's Debbie Rogers, one of the commissioners on the planning and zoning. We had recommended Angela Gladney as replacement for Mr. Dave Williams, who is now deceased, to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rogers. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Would you let Ms. Gladney know?
Yes, ma'am.
That...
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. At this time, and we do, I did see Ms. Gilpatrick here, I would like to offer as an appointment for the Bastrop Zoning Board of Adjustment, Ms. Jean Gilpatrick, would you like to come? Ms. Gilpatrick is very supportive with the Keep More House Beautiful movement. Thank you for your care and concern about the community.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to say anything, Ms. Gilpatrick?
Well, I'm delighted to be able to serve in any way I can with the city, because it's one of the things that I had looked forward to with my retirement, was I wanted to become involved with as much community involvement, you know, as I could, so that I could help wherever I possibly could. So, I appreciate this appointment.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion on my recommended appointment of Ms. Jean Gilpatrick to the Board of Adjustments.
I make a motion.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Item F, appoint chief of police. At this time, I want to make a recommendation, but I do ask that you look in your packets. You have a letter that I received from Adrian Bordalun, State Examiner. This vacancy, as of February the 8th, that exhausted the 60 days, this vacancy was created, again, I offered an appointment 60 days ago, and it, the council did not confirm it. And by that action, that council created a vacancy. We've exhausted that 60-day mark as of the 8th of February. Now, charter speaks to, subject to civil service laws as well as revised statute 332554, is that correct, Mr. Pierre? That the appointing authority must and shall appoint a police chief to fill that vacancy. We have exhausted all of our 60-day mark. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion as I offer for appointment Chief, Assistant Chief Reed.
I second that motion. I make that motion.
Properly moved.
Second.
And second. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Law?
Yes.
Mayor is tied.
Okay. I offer veto, I support Chief Reed to fill that vacancy. We do not want to remain out of compliance with the law as is stated under the statue and in the city charter.
You get to vote, ma'am.
Okay, my vote is yes. So, let the record reflect. All right, item G. Appoint assistant city clerk. We did this, and I know you probably remember recently, but the previous appointment decided that she wanted to remain where she was. Therefore, and of course, we have been working shorthanded for quite some time now, and we're trying to get everything up to staff, up to par. And all the departments have done a tremendous job in pulling together as we have been under staff. And it is my recommendation to offer to you for appointment as assistant city clerk. She has been working with us, working long hours as we play catch-up. Lorraine DeBoz Clark, she has a degree in business management. She worked at the deputy's office back in 1996 for four years. She comes to us with HR experience and city clerk for Collingston, Louisiana. Ms. Clark, would you like to stand up and just... At this time, I offer Ms. Lorraine Clark.
May I make that motion to appoint Renee?
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any question? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're welcome. Any other business, Ms. Goldman? City attorney, Mr. Pierre? All right, okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Properly moved and second. This meeting is adjourned.